You've got a lot of them, but no grounds coming in.
That's why I spoke to you.
Of course, a lot of them go up to the hallway and come in.
Really?
We're going to do some.
That'd be great. That'd be great. When will you get that right?
And more than likely, it's bad.
It's okay to have this.
It's like getting discouraged.
Yes, and yes, and yes, it's our commissioning. I love the use of our word, Richard, general providing with Frank's name.
Thank you, Dr. Whittle. My pleasure to have you here. I don't know if you're hearing me. What they said is leave. Normally, we'll put off our meeting. Knowledge and our creator, and let us play battle to our lives.
Excuse me, I've got a bad color, so I hope you can understand me, but please pray with me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for another day to let us live. Thank you for another day to let us do your work. We're so grateful to you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us, your beautiful creation. We're so appreciative of the wonderful people you put in this county to do your work. Please be with all the commissioners, the visitors, the department heads, everyone here with us tonight. Let us do your work. Let us do the things that you would be happy to see us do, that we'd be pleasing in your sight. Please be with the ones who couldn't be here with us tonight, ones who are sick, ones who are traveling. Please be with those people and get them home safely and get them whole again. We appreciate you so much. We pray these words in your heavenly sentence, Holy Name, Jesus Christ, amen.
By the light, solid play.
I am a patriot to the light of the United States of America. And you to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever being and ever ceasing.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome all the members in and just everyone who's here and in your seats. The now clerk, David.
Twenty yes, four absent.
Thank you. Now we begin our program by giving a presentation and presenting. Number one on our list is our longtime friend and colleague, Saywell. Say, you're up first. We do a kick it off and good seeing you back.
It's good to be seen back, Mayor. Usually I follow, I might lead off, usually I follow somebody or we get a proclamation if somebody's doing something heroic or outstanding and I go, great, now I gotta go talk about my little song and dance. But so I like to lead off, thanks very much. I can recognize somebody who wondered if he struck the last minute as is his way. My chairman, Mr. Phil Sumner, is here with us tonight as well, so happy to have him. Yeah, I'll be very brief and just kind of what's been going on last quarter. Hopefully, everyone, is everyone receiving our quarterly newsletters through their email? If not, please let me know. One thing that happened last quarter that kind of struck me, some of you have mentioned this to me, and I'll tell you the background of it. Jeff Hyatt is a good friend of mine. Jeff Hyatt does the, heads up the Nashville Chambers Regional Economic Development Organization called P-23rd. And Jeff texted me one night, a report, and he said, look, man, you guys are right behind us. You guys have been doing well. In fact, we looked at you all the last five years as just probably our most competitive MSA to Nashville. And I was like, what are you talking about? And I looked and sure enough, there's a report by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics that showed how many new jobs are in each MSA across the state. And we were tied for second with Chattanooga from 2022 to 2023, growing at, I think it's 4.9%, which is 1% behind what Nashville grew. Now, it's about, and that can happen, but one of the things that's always gotten me about looking at statistics and trends. People look at unemployment rates of a county, which isn't really telling because that takes into account the people who live there, but not where the jobs are being created. And obviously, people can work from wherever. What this report talks about is where the jobs are located. How many people were in our MSA, working, going to work every day from one year to the next. So I was very proud of that and to be up there with, right behind Nashville is, well, I think it's development, you make an announcement of a primary industry coming in and it takes two or three years to get online, two or three more years to get up to full production, and then those secondary jobs start coming. So this is actually stuff that we've been seeing this trend this way for the past six, eight years. COVID kind of threw things off a bit. I don't think it's going to be hard to be second most jobs two years in a row, so I don't think it'll happen next year, but who knows? What's coming online, you know, things will be a little while. But anyway, I think we all should be very proud of that. It's not just us. It's our neighbors, obviously Hawkins County, who we work with, has had a big part of that as well. One of the announcements that should be paying off very soon, because we already built the building last quarter, was Robinette Companies. And I know, like Dwight and Herschel, we talked about that. Y'all sponsored the bill a while back for going to build the incentive for them. And this body was gracious enough to grant them the pilot. They took a long time to get it announced, but we did get it announced. $10.3 million, built a new 100,000 square foot building on their campus in Piney Flats, and they're hiring 70 people. We got another announcement coming up this coming week in Kingsport. And lots and lots of people are looking at the site that has rail available. And again, just to be clear, we are only marketing it. If you don't need rail, we don't present the rail site in PP2. And we have two really, really strong folks looking at that land right now. We have a lead, it's a very early lead, new lead, on Aerospace Park. Our Director of Business Development, Michael Parker, and along with Mark Canty at the airport, Lynn Tully, with the state of Tennessee, have been at MRO Americas in Atlanta. It is the one trade show that we have a booth at. We partner with the airport. We feel like an MRO project is the most likely to go on Aerospace Park and have the impact that we want it to have. And they met with the client out there. Two of them are down there. He's at TBA training in Nashville right now, so I won't see him until Monday morning, but I'm eager to. He told me well. I'm eager to get details from him. So activity continues to be good. A lot of projects have slowed. A couple of projects have just fizzled out. That is, we didn't lose them in another community. They just got put on hold for a while. One project that we're looking at, primarily focusing on a park in Bristol, just said they're going to put it off for about three years and they don't stay in touch with us. And as we develop more land to look at that to maybe be better for them. But I think we're, if they're going to do anything, I think it comes down between us and one other possibility, a community of Virginia. But at any rate, we're still hammered at it. We're still working very hard with our military recruitment on workforce. We had a great visit at the National Guard. We're going to have an existing industry meeting. We haven't had our existing industry group together face to face since COVID. We've been Zooming. We're going to do it at Don'tar next month, and we have the U.S. Chamber coming up to talk about their Hire Heroes program because they say they know they got military people who want to be in a place like northeast Tennessee. And they want to talk to our industries about what these programs have to offer if they want to sign up and participate in recruitment of companies. So, or of people. So we're just, we're just trying to hit on every front, listen to our industries, make sure we're taking care of them first and foremost, and keeping the marketing and recruitment up and obviously trying to avoid the distractions the best we can. And again, I thank y'all. After, I want to thank you again publicly for all you've done to support networks when there's a lot of misinformation coming out. It bothers me when they say you guys aren't informed before you make a vote. Never. I know anybody in this room not to be informed before they make a vote. And y'all have been getting all the information as we get it. I don't know why they, you have Mr. Jones and Mr. Venable on our board, and they bring that information to you. So obviously, if we could control the media, you know, I'll be drinking free bubble up and eating rainbow stew. But at any rate, it's frustrating. I know y'all have thick skins. Don't think we don't appreciate it. Thanks very much. Any questions y'all have, as you know, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Clay? Andrew, you're welcome.
I love a vote tie.
I just had two questions. Could you repeat? I was going to write it down, but I didn't. I apologize. What was the percentage growth?
I believe it's 4.9%.
4.9?
Check our newsletter, be sure. It's 1% behind what Nashville's was.
And what, and excuse my ignorance on this, the MSA, what, can you explain that?
MSA is just a term by the U.S. government. They separate us, and by the way, John City was just like three spots behind us on there, so ideally, I think we all be one, and they say one time we were. But it's, it's us and Hawkins County, Hancock County, and Johnson County. And there are three counties in Virginia, but that didn't trigger it. This is Tennessee, part of it.
My second question was, and I don't know if you can say anything, the two leads you said about the rail area.
Yep.
Are they from outside of the area?
One is, and one's, I don't want to say the expansion of a company in Tennessee because they're in Tennessee, but it's a completely new project. It's not affiliated with their other facility in Tennessee. It's the same company.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Duane.
Thank you. I brought this up once before when Don'tar shut down, where they went from white paper to brown paper. And since then, we had another mill over just west of Asheville, North Carolina, Evergreen, they shut down. So there is a, probably a 100-mile radius of this area that there is wood chips that there's no market for. If you go west, Spring City, if you go east, Covington, Virginia, and if you go southeast, North Wilkesboro. So we need something to do with these wood chips.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. King. We actually had a lead on such a company, and we save all the information, the companies we could gather that could supply those. And unfortunately, it looks like that company's going to be looking somewhere else. We're trying to find that the best we can. It's tough going that specific, but to your point, we have that asset, that resource here. And we are trying to reach out and find it, talking to consultants who might deal with those industries. It hasn't gone very well, just to be frank, but we, we are mindful, and it was because you brought it up that we've been trying to do what we can to try to locate those projects and then reach out and try to be as aggressive about getting them here as we can. We haven't gotten very far with them just yet. I really hope we do. And anybody, you have all my contact, anybody in the industry you know who thinks they could offer some insight about how we might be able to do that, please, I know you're not sure about doing it, tell them to give me a call, tell them to talk to you, and we could always be, or be educated because nobody on our staff has worked extensively in that industry, and it helps that, people who know the industry. And it's helpful, he's been very busy, but you know, we have Troy Wood, who is the plant manager at Don'tar. He's getting that thing up and running now. But he's on our board, and he's been a resource to this link. We've had something specific for him. He's been there to answer for us.
Thank you, Duane. Any other questions for Clay? Clay, thank you for coming and bringing us up to date on what's happening at work. Very important part of our county. Great results over the years, results that you can show. It's not, not bragging when you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'll ask Mr. Dick Capper to meet in well. Dick, I'm happy to have you here with us. If you will allow me, I will share a proclamation that Shepherd requested, and a very good one. Proclamation, April is National Donate Life Month. Whereas Tennessee Donors Service Citizens, Donate Life Agency, a nonprofit organization, dedicated to saving and improving life through organ, eye, and tissue donations throughout Tennessee. It is one of 57 organ donor procurement organizations throughout the nation. And whereas each organ donor hero can give and give his life to eight people, and each tissue donor can improve another's condition. Whereas more than 100,000 American men, women, and children, 3,000 of whom are Tennesseans, are waiting for life-saving organ transplants. Whereas the most effective way to address this health crisis is to educate and encourage Tennesseans to commit to registering their decision to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor in the Donate Life Tennessee Registry. DonateLifeTN.org or at their local driver's service center. Whereas Sullivan County supports saving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation and finds the cause of such immediate and worthwhile importance as that. Now, therefore, Richard Venable, with and on behalf of Sullivan County, do proclaim that Sullivan County observes April as National Donate Life Month. Furthermore, I ask all citizens to register their decision to be donors to Donate Life Tennessee Registry at DonateLifeTN.org or their local driver's service center. Dick, thank you for bringing this. This is something that is vital to health Tennessee and health Tennessee as a whole. Thank you. And I'll give you an opportunity to address our group.
Okay. Right here.
You can do this, Will. We'll address this commission.
Okay. So I just wanted to thank the commission for doing this proclamation for us. As the mayor said, you know, there's currently 3,000 Tennesseans awaiting a life-saving transplant, 100,000 people across the country. There's currently an 11-year-old girl from Kingsport who is awaiting a heart transplant in Vanderbilt. And so the way that we are able to address this is by getting more people signed up. The more people we have on the registry, the more chances we have to save lives. And because of donor heroes, more than 100 people are saved each and every day with life-saving transplants. So I would encourage you guys, when you're out in your communities, talking to your constituents, to your voters, to just have a conversation with them. I mean, it's a personal decision for everybody, and I would just encourage those conversations, encourage research into it, and just, you know, help us save lives and just become a donor hero for somebody else. Thank you guys so much. Thank you for everything you do. Public services are a great, great thing to do, so thank you all.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
We have no, the next on our agenda, like confirmation appointments, we don't have any on the agenda. Next, the approval of commission minutes from previous meeting. It's been spread to you. We have a motion to adopt Gardner, second in this legal, in discussion, correction, and addition. See none? When the board opens, cast your vote. The minutes as published. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twenty yes, four absent.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of notary documents and votes. First off, remind you that as the clerk reads the list, if you have objection, please state that to the clerk, and we will remove that name and give it further consideration at another point when you've made your objection. So Madam Clerk, if you're prepared, if you will read the names of applicants for notary public, Sullivan County.
Brian Lee Adams, Yvonne M. Allen, Mary Jane Alley, Casey Leann Amaro, Portia Amaro Collins, Stacy Alvis, Lydia M. Ashley, Melissa D. Bell, Robert Joseph Bobblett, Jacqueline T. Burnett, Jaden Calhoun, Egenia Rene Church, Heather Combs, Marcia A. Cox, Linda Ann Davenport, Connie Delp, Laura Dos, Sherry D. Dodery, Sherry A. Die, Allison Dyer, Regina Edwards, Malcolm Fowler, Caitlin Frazier, Heather Lee Garland, Amber Golden, Michael Robert Hess, Jo De Hilton, Carl Allen Hauser Jr., Sherry K. Hyatt, R. Grant Hyatt, Rachel James, Caitlin F. Jenkins, Jessica LaFollette, Sandra M. Leonard, Tina Denise Mann, Bailey Moffin, Sylvia N. McCracken, Alexis McMillan, Travis Ryan McMurray, Hunter Cheyenne Milhorn, Kendra Craddock Morgan, Marcia Notifer, W. D. Overbay, Sabrina Owens, Jackie Wayne Owens, Casey Pedron, Thomas A. Peters, Stephanie Jill Philippi, Charla Suzanne Pretty, Melissa A. Reimer, Melissa A. Riddle, Joshua C. Roberts, Mercedes Roberts, Robin W. Rutherford, Stephanie Sanders, Rachel Covington Sanders, Heather Saul, Mercedes Sedan, Shauna Sue Schaefer, Natalie Shue, Susan K. G. Sorrell, Charlie Miller, Emily Elizabeth Stevenson, Matthew David Strickler, John Allen Stufflestreet, Whitney Paul Taylor, Joshua Matthew Thomas, Robin Elliott Thompson, Vicki S. Tipton, Jared Van Dyke, Kelsey Webster, Miranda Whitaker, and Melissa Ann Whitehead.
You've heard the list, and Madam Clerk, I know on your pass out, your personal sureties, do we, we need to include those in the motion? And you want to identify those and exactly what they are.
What they are is, sorry. What a personal surety is, when you become a notary, you have two options for bonding. You can either purchase a four-year notary bond from an insurance company, or you can use personal sureties that own property in Sullivan County in excess of $10,000. And that's what these people have chosen to do, is use personal sureties. And the names of the notaries that have done that is Ashley Lee Davis. Her personal surety is William Derek Malcolm, and Shane David Ray. And the other one is Jada Bolden, and her personal surety is Lonnie Gray and Carla F. Dunn.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody, well, first of all, we have a motion to adopt. Commissioner Cole, Commissioner April, Commissioner Gardner, and Commissioner Cross, second. Anybody have any questions for, this is a little bit new, so anybody have any questions for the clerk on the surety bonds? See none? When the board opens, cast your vote. Hold clear, and the notary public list that's been spread on your desk. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twenty yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, the list is approved as presented. Also under the sign, we have the approval of bonds. And if I may, I'll read you the request, and then we'll take a motion to adopt. 买了 bond for Larry Bailey, Director of Finance. Whereas, of course, the Tennessee Code annotated Title VIII, Chapter 19, County, a legislative body, Sullivan County, has the authority to authorize and approve statutory bonds for elected and appointed officials serving Sullivan County. And whereas the bond for Larry Bailey, Director of Finance, is due for removal. So the floor is open for a nomination to approve the bond renewal. Sam Jones has moved second by April and Calvin, in discussion. The board opens. Cast your vote on the motion to approve the bond for Mr. Bailey. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twenty yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, the motion is adopted. Next up is public comment. And we will have two public comment sections at our meeting tonight, as is normal. We'll have public comment addressing those issues that you might want to talk to the captain commissioner about, and those issues that are in planning and zoning. Thank you, Commissioner Cross. Okay, we have short list, and it's my personal pleasure to welcome the first person that has a public comment, is Jill Schott. Jill, I've knew you as Jill Grayson.
That's fine.
And I've known Jill since she was a really young lady. Welcome to Sullivan County's commission, Jill.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say hello. I am Jill Grayson-Stott. My maiden name is Grayson. But I am with, I just have recently come to Ballad Health. I'm their senior director of community relations. So I just wanted to come to say hello, and should you need anything, I can link my number and email with the mayor to send out, if that's okay? Should you ever need anything. I think our CEO of Holston Valley, Rebecca Beck, came and presented several months ago. And maybe we can get John Jeter, the CEO of Bristol, as well, to come and present, just to keep you all updated with what's going on with the hospitals in your area. I'm just a phone call or text or email away, so yeah, but thanks so much for your time.
Thanks so much, Jill. Thanks for being with us. The last name on the list is Amy Little. Ms. Little, you're recognized, and well, would you give us your name and address for the Reverend, Ms. Little?
Sure. 304 Amy S. Colman in Bristol, Amy Little. You guys might recognize who's the lady that comes and fusses about the jail every day. You guys might recognize who's the lady that comes and fusses about the jail every now and then, and I'm gonna do that again. But this time, it's in a different format. I'm gonna read excerpts and headlines from local newspapers. Starting from 1891, "The Old Sullivan County Prison Hall is a Disgrace." 1899, "A Movement Has Started to Secure a New Jail at Blountville." 1901, "Sullivan County's New Three-Story Jail Is Ready for Occupancy." 1912, "The County Jail Is Filling Rapidly." 1916, "Sullivan County Jail Is Packed to Douglas Capacity." Where officials have ordered an addition be built. 1917, "It Seems the Conditions of the Sullivan County Jail Do Not Improve. Overcrowding and Insanitary Prison Is Not a Modern Idea." 1921, "Jail Is Crowded Almost to Capacity." 1925, "Revolting and Intolerable Conditions Exist in Blountville Jail." 1930, "Jail Is Two-Fold, Prisoners Taken to Car County." 1937, "Committee Recommends New Building." 1940, "Grand Jury Again Calls for Construction of a Larger Jail." 1946, "What We Give Them Is No Way to Punish Criminals, It's a Way to Breed Criminals." 1954, "We're Contributing to the Making of Criminals Rather Than to Their Correction by Forcibly Detaining Them Under Shocking Conditions." 1956, "County Completes Construction of a New Jail." 1968, "Sheriff Announces Remodeling Plans." 1970, "Grand Jury Reports Substandard Conditions at the Jail." 1975, "There Isn't Room in Our Jail for Human Negativity, Rehabilitation, or Anything Resembling More Than the Confinement of Livestock." 1977, "Sullivan Jail Packed to Capacity With People and Problems." 1981, "Extreme Crowding in the Jail Reported by the Grand Jury." 1986, "Judge Finds Jail Conditions Cruel and Inhumane, Orders County to Eliminate Overcrowding." 1987, "New Jail Brings an End to the County's History of Housing Permanent Prisoners in an Unsuitable Jail." Commissioner Duvall expects the jail to be a solution to many of the problems that have plagued the sheriff of the county. 1988, "Jail Could Be Running Out of Space." 1992, "Jail Time Becoming By Reservation Only." 1998, "Jail Houses 507 Inmates for the Capacity of 317." 2005, "Jail Task Force Considers Options for Expansion." 2007, "County Opens a New Jail Facility." 2012, "Sullivan Looks at Alternative Sentencing to Ease Crowding." 2014, "Jail Nearly Loses Certification." 2016, "Sullivan County Must Expand Its Jail Facilities." 2017, "Sullivan Jail Overcrowding Has Reached Critical Mass." 2018, "Sullivan County Officials Nearing Solution to Jail Overcrowding." 2019, "We're Violating Constitutional Rights," and I think you all know the rest. So, my point is that we can, we have a choice to keep doing what we've been doing, or we can do something different, and I think that we should do something different. Thanks.
I can place the list, anyone in the audience that did not have the opportunity to sign up? Well, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Gardner, Commissioner Kelsey, you're recognized on item number one on today's resolution. We're moving fast, aren't we? Move for adoption, item one, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Any discussion? Seeing none, put it on the board. When the board opens, cast your vote on item number one for zoning plan. I like it when we vote on everything on the board. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number one is adopted. We will now recess for public hearing, or public hearing and zoning issued before the county commission. Ms. Torres, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. We have two requests to present to you all. I emailed these a couple weeks ago, as well as the PowerPoint. Thank you, gentlemen, for forwarding. And on your desk is your color packet. But moving along, we have two requests to present to you all. Thank you, ma'am. The first is from Dash Properties LLC, and their request is to rezone property from M1, which is light manufacturing, warehousing, to B3, which is general business. You can see, this is on Highway 75. The blue is planned manufacturing, the red is B3, the gray is M1, and then the green is still farmland, just to give you an idea. Next slide, please. This is the building. It's an existing building with a few tenants. Over on the right side is the retail operation. So, the purpose of this is to bring it into, it's no longer warehousing, it's now a retail operation. So, we are, those are more pictures of the site. It went to our planning commission last month, and they're forwarding a favorable recommendation to you all unanimously. There was no opposition. We did get support from the other tenant of the other side of the building. So, that's all I have for case one. Of course, the minutes, staff report, and other information, all the other maps are in your packet.
Questions? Sam, you button?
Commissioners Travis and I both be in favor of this, it's a retail business. He says he opened up this one, he's opened up another one, and in Jonesbury, he's growing and doing, as far as we can tell pretty well. And that's, this one's in Sullivan County.
Sounds like a statement to me. Any other questions for, we're on item number one on today's, on the agenda. Seeing none, we're ready to vote when the board opens. Cast your vote on item number one. Comes to you in a positive manner, there's no motion. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number one is adopted. Ms. Torres, you're recognized on item number two. Cast your question.
Thank you. The second request is from Robbie Fink. This request is to rezone a vacant residential lot from R1, Single Family Residential, to B1, which is neighborhood business. You can see my black star is on the specific site. This is a zoomed-out location of the zoning map. As you can see, this is on Highway 36 and just a couple lots in. Just below the black star is the existing daycare, also zone B, or B3. And then the B1, you all approved that rezoning a couple years ago for the expansion of the daycare. Next slide, please. This is zoomed in zoning map. Again, where the blue arrow is, is the existing daycare. Rezone next door to B1 for the expansion, and they purchase another lot for another expansion. Now, the specific request to rezone it to B1 is so they can expand the playground and staff parking. So, the parents would still use the main parking to drop off kids and pick them up. The existing B1 lot that you all rezoned a few years ago is very rocky, and it's just not suitable for parking and the playground. So, that's the purpose of that. This is construction and other commercial, 36. This particular lot in question has been vacant, you know, forever, and so if it is rezoned, then of course, we'll have a site plan with buffering and all of that. I think the next slide, I have some pictures. And there's the lot in question. You can see in the background is the construction company adjacent to this lot. But again, this particular lot backs up to the playground, and this would be used for overflow parking for the staff. And test you in a favorable unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. We had no opposition from the community. I sent out many letters and put up the sign, so we feel good about this request as well. And they're here, if you have any questions to them.
Any questions for Ms. Torres? Sam, you're recognized.
Yeah, and this is actually just out behind my neighborhood, and they've operated this daycare for a few years, and done a great job for, in the community, and I'm glad they're being able to put this vacant piece of property, get it cleaned up, and put it to use. We would ask support for that, for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Any other questions for? Well, it's noted on my agenda that I should, at this point in time, ask, if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak on this. I failed to do that on item number one, so let's do item number two, and then if we need to revisit item number one, we'll do that. Anyone wish to speak on item, case number two, on the planning zoning? Seeing none, we're back in session. Board opens, cast your vote on item number two. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number two is adopted. And now, go back and revisit item number one. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on that? And if so, we will have a revote, because an improper motion without a public hearing. You'd like to speak on item number one?
Yes, sir.
You're welcome to do so. Give us your name and address.
I'm David Cooper, I'm at 1992 Highway 75. I am the owner of the business. I just want to say thank you, the board, for your consideration and approving our business to go forward. Thank you very much.
And that's on item number one?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll get a vote again on it.
I'll go back to work.
Thanks, sir. We have a motion to adopt item number one. Aker, second. Slakel, Kelsey, could you read, put that on the board, please? Try to do these things right. We'll get the board open. Okay. Cast your vote on item, item case number one, and planning zoning. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
19 yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number one is adopted. Thank you for doing that, and thank you, Misty, for tapping on my agenda. Reminder to ask for public comment. You can put it down there, but you can't make me read it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And the thank you for everything you do.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you re-announce the vote on item number one?
Yes, someone voted late, and it didn't show up on my screen, but it showed up on this voting sheet. The vote now is 20 yes, four absent.
Thank you. Did not change the outcome of the vote, just correcting the record. Next up, the consent agenda. You did a great job last Thursday night of discussion and handling things that don't need further notification in this meeting, so do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Stidham, seconded by Commissioner Harrison. Any discussion now, if you see anything on these blue sheets that you would like to have further discussion overnight, raise your hand, we will bump it off the consent agenda. Seeing none, we'll need a unanimous vote. We have a motion. The board opens, cast your vote on the consent agenda, as it did. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority. Consent agenda is approved. Next up, resolutions. Well, first up, the consent agenda goes on item number four. Commissioner Dave Aker, you're recognized on item number four.
Thank you, Chairman. Item number four is resolution to amend the General Fund 2023 fiscal year budget for $11,000 to replace chairs and upgrade technology in the Chancery courtroom. As I mentioned before, this item four and item five kind of are together, but we'll do them separately. Technology is trying to catch up with everything, and then furniture hasn't been done in 25 years, and so we just pulled these out of their wish list while we're going through budget right now, so that they can go ahead and work with Chris Davis' purchasing department. And yes, as a commissioner asked last week, the county does a very good job of trying to recycle old furniture and move it around, so if anyone has any wishes or wants, do not come to me, go to Chris Davis and everything. I'm only here for copier leases. Yep, and everyone in the firm is will be a sponsor of it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Aker moves for the immediate introduction and adoption of item number four, and all those voting in the affirmative to be listed as co-sponsors, prime co-sponsors of any discussion. Seeing none, when the board opens, cast your vote on item number four. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number four is adopted. Next up, Commissioner Aker, you're recognized on four.
Thank you, Chairman. Item number five, resolution to amend the General Fund 2023 fiscal year budget for $45,686 to improve the operations of general session and juvenile courtrooms and administrative offices. This is for Judge Nelson and Vance's request, and so, as you know, in the last couple years, we have done some nice technology upgrades, so the computers are the least amount. But again, the new chairs and office furniture that's over 25 years old, and again, they'll work with Chris Davis's office for purchasing, and then everyone can have, go there to find out if any of it's useful or anything in this county. But I would appreciate passage of this on waiver rules, and everyone who votes in the affirmative will be a co-sponsor. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Aker moves for the immediate introduction and adoption of item number five, and moves that those voting in the affirmative, they show as prime co-sponsors. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. When the board opens, please cast your vote. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number five is adopted. Commissioner King, you're recognized on item number six. Okay, there you go. Thank you, Mayor. You're right.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is to approve funding to enhance and prove the funds of the former Blountville Elementary School currently being used as county offices using special ARCA funds recently allocated to Sullivan County in an amount of $90,346.80. So, I would like to use waiver of rules and ask for immediate passage for this. I think there may be some painting being going on over there, and clean up, and it's looking, looking good.
Commissioner King moves immediate introduction and adoption of item number six, seconded by various commissioners, and we have a board, so we have questions to ask for. Commissioner Aker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Really, this is just a statement. I know all of us have been meeting over there the last few months for budget and everything, and the previous commission authorized the purchase of that land from the school board and all that. And it's hard to fathom or really visualize some things. I know some of y'all in Blountville really have a vision for it and everything. But it's been, I look forward to see what that building can be and will be for the county and everything. There's a lot of land, and so it's been a great meeting place. Had a nice reception there tonight, I was told. I showed up five minutes late, but, no, seriously, it was hard to vision when we spent the money we did to get that back into it, but it's centrally located, and it's gonna be a well-worth venture to all that, so, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Aker. Commissioner Aager recognized. Commissioner Cross, did you? Which side?
As Commissioner Aker says, it's gonna be, you know, a benefit and all that stuff to some of the new ones, and I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but I would imagine some of the new commissioners feel the same way. What is, what is the plan going forward with that building? You know, we weren't involved with the purchase of it. What we know of it before we put What do we know with it before we put $100,000 on it?
Commissioner Aker.
I'll speak for what I know, and I know some of the other ones. It's going to take a while. But right now, you see, we're moving quite a few offices over there and redoing quite a bit of the internal structure work. And so you're going to see the county finance departments over there, other different offices going on. Couple of, there were a couple of buildings right there behind it. We got the power turned off and disconnected. And so I believe there's a nice department that's going to help tear that couple of those down and everything, clean that up. And then, as has been mentioned a couple times, there's some really good space. We may try to do some athletic fields and everything over there, community center. And I know it's just got a, it's going to take a little time for it and everything. And that's why for this $90,000, there was some ARPA funds that were kind of, didn't get used for another project. And so it made sense for this project that it was limited on what it could, scope could be done for, and to clean up that front space, the front entrance, as bad as it looks now, to have it going forward.
So the plan is fluid at this point?
It is fluid, because it's going to take incremental amounts of money and everything and such. So this is, this isn't taxpayer money. This is federal government money that was delivered to us that we hope to never have to pay back right there.
King, thank you, Commissioner Aager. Commissioner Cross, you're recognized.
I decided, I was just going to ask very quickly, because I think this is a great project, but the pressure wash and paint and repair, are we replacing a lot of that trim for this? I mean, is that trim aren't going to be replaced, or is it just freshened and repaired? That's good sponsor.
Mr. Vayner.
Mr. Vayner. Right now, we're simply testing to see what is rehabilitating. We can find rehabilitating, we can do parts of it. There are places we will have to, there's some rotten right around the front entrances, the worst you see of the whole building, and around, at least across the front and the back. It's a main thing was, we've got to get it cleaned, so it's a positive. And inside, for those of you that have been in it, you've seen my office, and I believe David mentioned repurposing and stuff. I've got an office up there that most people have been very complimentary of. It's got a new vinyl floor, new lighting, and new paint job, and recycled desks and stuff for tables. In other words, I've got a nice table with eight chairs around it that if anyone's visited my office, it's impressive. Someone discarded it, and our maintenance department put it in storage, and they rounded it up for me. And pretty much like my office back here, except quite a bit larger, I'll even admit that. But it's good for meetings. The mayor knows how it is. We can not have a pleasant meeting in there, but we can have a lot of smaller meetings in there, groups from county commissioners. And right now, I know Tracy, the trustee, and a banker and I have got a meeting in there next week. We don't have to go to a conference room or take the chance of being down back here and being interrupted by people walking through. So that's what we strive toward. And I would say this in behalf of the community of Blomville. Blomville is a wonderful place, not to be brought up here or anything, but been in and out of here for the last 30 years. They've got a cafeteria up there, a room, that would make a great community room for Blomville. I'm not kidding you. And it should, something similar to that, if not, it is valuable, and there is not a good place to meet. You have to borrow a room from someone that's not in government, or only you're going to have to go to a school or go to a church to meet here in Blomville for size or room that we've got up there. Cattlemen's Barn is great, but that's busy a lot, and also we have paper that would go down there. But it's a great facility, and I'm just saying, if we need to get a bunch of employees together, we don't have a facility here. Used to, we could build about 100 back here. But that's, when you've got 700 general employees and highways, try to get them together for insurance meeting or whatever, we need something. And it's in good shape, it looks to me like. It's got, already got a sound system and everything. We're not asking free money right now for that, but in the future, I'd hope that we'd be able to do something for it. But I've mentioned Joyce and several people, it needs some support to get it back.
I could say, Mr. Vayner has been on certain scavenger hunts, and quite honestly, has rounded up some really, really nice furniture for us. And those folks that moved were the ones that had the most desperate situation downstairs to basement, and they're there now in a good office. I would say, and you need to know, that all the occupants of the historic courthouse here in Sauk County have been invited to look at putting their offices there. And still under consideration by some of our constitutional officers, and we continue to talk, and there are some funds of ARPA and otherwise that are available for some renovations. Commissioner Cross, would you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody, we are having youth programs up there, basketball, football, cheerleading. It's being utilized just about every day, so it's an asset to the community. So, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to do this in Blomville.
Thank you. Blue board open. So Mr. King renews his motion, and without any further discussion, we're board open. Cast your vote on item number six. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
19 yes, one no, four absent.
Ever received necessary majority, item number six is adopted. Next up, item number 12. And that's Commissioner Zane Benham. I know you're recognized on item number 12, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 12 is a resolution to levy a 4% county hotel motel tax and use the proceeds to promote tourism and tourism development as per state law. Not really a whole resolution, but I'd like to give a little background on this. Yesterday, I received some clarification from the state of Tennessee regarding a lodging tax. And according to that clarification, the county commission can levy up to, key word's up to, 4% lodging tax countywide. And I would say that was county attorney's street opinion from the first day, but he owes us to go to the state and get some clarification, which we've done. And so this was through Jason Wolfhauer's office, the comptroller, and he said, it's perfectly legal, it's perfectly understandable for a county commission to levy a 4% lodging tax across the entire state, across the entire county, including the incorporated parts. There's not really enough time to communicate with all the entities involved, and there are several entities involved here, of course, Kingsport, Bristol, Bluff City, Johnson City. So in order to do that, and to be able to hear their thoughts and fears and suggestions, we'd like to put this on first reading. At the end of the resolution, it says waiver of rules, but we've asked for it to be on first reading. And that discussion has to be done in the near future, and hopefully next month, we can come and have a vote on an amended resolution. Be more than happy to answer any questions that I can on that.
Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I've been a supporter for this conversation 100% from the beginning, and then Zane and I've talked, and actually, I would probably have been doing this resolution later in the years, so I don't know what spirit I did, but I'm very happy it did. And as a constituent of Bristol, of course, there's no official thing, but I do see one of our council members sitting back there and everything. We look very forward to looking at some collaboration. As mentioned earlier, let's just vote on this and go, well, as Zane said, we want to, as he's had conversations with Kingsport and having them with Bristol, to be able to really lay out a good plan next month on how the tourism dollars would work. There's some, there is actually some excitement after the first round of just hearing about taxes, how it can be used for the tourism. There's some really good conversations going along on that line, and so we just look forward to having that information next month. And like I said, been very positive so far from where I am, so we look forward to that. Thank you, Zane.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Aker. Any further questions for Mr. Benham? It's on first reading.
I'd just like to say also that I don't think a lot of the city sometimes understand that this money comes back. It's not just the county asking the city for money, but that tourism dollars should be used all throughout the county, no matter what entity we're talking about. So hopefully, this will be something that'll be beneficial and help grow the pie for everybody and help us down the road as we look for other streams of revenue.
No objection, pass it on first reading. We heard calendar, next month's calendar. Okay, next up, item number 13. Commissioner Gardner, you're recognized on item 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 comes from the Office of the Circuit Court Clerk. Resolution simply approves transferred funds to cover increasing costs for supplies and services, transferring $15,000 from administration of juries from that account to the account of Circuit Court Clerk supplies and materials. Without objection, I renew my motion on waiver of rules.
Commissioner Gardner moves for the immediate introduction and adoption of item number 13, seconded by Commissioner Calson. Any questions for the sponsor? Seeing none, it renews its motion. When the board opens, cast your vote on item 13. Requires 16 votes for passage. Is everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Item 13 is adopted on waiver of rule. Next up, item 14 is our library board member, Commissioner Cross. Commissioner Cross, you're recognized on item 14.
Thank you. I'm seeking waiver of rules on this. It's just acceptance of a grant in the amount of $10,000. I do have a separate question off this. At the beginning of that, I've never asked this before, but at the beginning of the meeting, when you asked about the consent calendar, can members add things to the consent at that time, or is it just take them off?
I hadn't presented at that time. It could, it could, you're accepting a grant, so it could have been on consent.
Okay, thank you. This came in late, and I just wondered if that was a possibility, when he asked, anyone want to bump, if someone could say, I'd like to add. I didn't know if that was a possibility.
I interpret the rule as spending money, and you're not spending county money.
Correct. There is no matching funds for this.
Yes, in the future, we could do those on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for sponsor? Commissioner Cross moves immediate introduction and adoption of item number 14, seconded by Commissioner Michael Cole. Commissioner Jones, you're recognized.
Yesterday, at the budget meeting, I think this should be amended. If this, I think this is the same one, that she got a message right before we, she spoke to us at the budget and said that they were approved for $7,500 at the budget meeting. The new grant was approved for $7,500. They applied for 10, but they got approved for $7,500.
Commissioner Cross, you want, you accept amendment to?
I think it's.
Amendment. You want a timeout? Okay, let's roll this. We have three folks that have, we'll roll it to the hill of the calendar, item 14. We have three people that won't speak on it, and we'll take, before we do that, Andrew, we'll take just a short five-minute break, let you talk with the folks that have. Yeah, sure. We haven't moved on, Commissioner Aker?
Thank you. Not totally disagreeing with Sam Jones. He is correct. Yesterday, in the budget committee, Megan said that she had just gotten approved for $7,500 towards a car. But with all due respect, if you'll read this resolution, it says $10,000 for the purchase of a car, plus Wi-Fi hotspots, plus other stuff. So Andrew, I would, I'm okay with it as written, because let's just go on, move on. And with all due respect, I'll just tell you right now, there's no guarantee you get in the car. But, yeah, but the problem is, this grant seems like it covers other things. She never mentioned Wi-Fi hotspot, so I'm okay, let's just go. Because you're accepting the money. I'm not telling you you're buying a car and everything.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cross, we're kind of into this thing. I've heard somebody say maybe amend it up to $10,000. I'm sorry. Okay, you're recognized.
Yes, I would be fine with amending it with the words "up to," so that covers even if it went past what was mentioned in the meeting. Because I have it on, I mean, I've been told twice now that this is for a $10,000 grant. I mean, I just now quickly sent a message, and this is for a $10,000 grant. Now, what that grant is to be used for, that's, but the acceptance of money was for $10,000.
That's a board.
All right, so that's, so that's with the budget committee. I'm simply presenting a grant to be accepted. That's it.
You accept the amendment up to?
Up to is fine.
And Mr. Harrison, you, that's all recognition. You, okay? Okay. Any other questions for sponsor? We don't, I shall remove this from the hill of the calendar and handle it now.
Thank you, sir.
With the board open, cast your vote on item 14 as amended. Ever received necessary, Madam Clerk, take the vote. Everyone voted?
Jessica Hatton, 20 yes, four absent.
Ever received necessary majority, item 14 is adopted. I was just looking for the vote numbers, and we got to vote quick on spending rules, because start losing numbers, it's going to be hard to get sick things. Okay, next up, item 15, Commissioner Hunterlock, you're recognized on item 15.
This resolution is adopted policy set forth in recent legislation by state of Tennessee General Assembly that creates early retirement option for public safety employees. Sauk County adopts provisions of 25-year reduced retirement in the state of Tennessee, retire TCRS for public safety employees. That's going to be Sauk County Sheriff's Office and Sauk County EMA and EMS, along with dispatchers underneath the sheriff's office, who would be able to adopt the bridge if this is passed. And I ask for waiver of rules. Both city of Kingsport, city of Bristol already have this in place, and have had it in place quite some time. I'm not really sure why we haven't adopted it since. So I ask for waiver of rules, and anybody voting yes for this, be voting affirmative, be added as co-sponsor.
Very good. Commissioner Lock renews his motion for immediate introduction and adoption of item 15. I request that all those voting in the affirmative be listed as prime co-sponsors. Commissioner Cross, you're recognized.
This is a wonderful program. My dad retired under one of these programs. It is, it's a wonderful thing, so I heavily support this. It's great, it's a great program.
Thank you for coming, Andrew. Any further questions for sponsor? Seeing none, with the board open, cast your vote on item number 15. Requires 16 votes for passage. Don't anybody leave. Madam Clerk, has everyone voted? Getting out of my cadence. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
20 yes, four absent.
Ever received necessary majority, item 15 is adopted. That completes our resolution agenda. I noticed in our packet, we have a Sauk County Highway Department report, Commissioner Scott here. We need to cover anything on this, Jim, or Scott, just report to the commission. Thank you for doing so, and thank you for continuing to do a great job for Sauk County, the entire department, and pass our thanks on to them. I hesitate to ask, any commissioner have? Well, I'm going to give everybody a chance. Well, I'm going to give everybody a chance, after. Oh, don't you write it down, Travis? No. Commissioner Glover, you're recognized. Scott Murray, would you come up a minute? Scott, you ain't getting off easy tonight, you got to come up.
That's what I'm going to do, see if we can get 4 million out of him, this shit will find him. I want to, I want to recognize Scott Murray for a minute of what he does for his employees. Last week, his paving crew was paving the road next to where I live up there, and he had a employee get busted in the head by an idiot, and it was about two or two and a half hour standoff, from what I understand, and they finally rescued the guy, got him in, but, the next day, this man took it upon himself to go there and set most of the day to make sure that his employees were safe. And I want people to recognize, that could have turned into a bad situation, and Scotty, I want to thank you, and I want to thank those men for what they did out there on Turner Road, that, that's the problem, and I've said it before, we've got people living in mobile homes with no water, electricity, and when people live in a situation like that, they're idiots, and when they treat your employees like that, that's not right. But I want to thank you for what you've done for those employees, staying out there most of the day like you did, and I appreciate that, and people in that community, they're stable, the road's paved and out, and it's safe, and thank you for what you've done for those men.
And I want to say, you know, our employees, no matter the highway department, the sheriff's department, Donna Whitaker goes out, you know, she don't always want to out, you never know what you're going to run into, so, it could have been a lot worse, and I'm thankful that, you know, that it wasn't as bad as it was, but, I want to thank my employees, you know, today, we've worked all day, I mean, we didn't shut down, I thought about it, but I said, I was quiet there myself, I said, first come, the worst, I opened my truck on us, using my truck for a weapon, so, like I said, it could have been a lot, I mean, and the sheriff's department go through this every day, I mean, they go through it every day, so.
Eric and Jim said, I think, for what they're on, I don't know what they did, I don't...
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Commissioner Glover. Like Commissioner Iverson, you're... I actually wasn't going to say anything tonight, but since Scotty came up, I was actually going to just tell him thank you, but he's already run away, but that's okay. So, I've talked to a lot of you about, I have this idea of trying to get some kind of centralized maintenance for vehicles in the county, and really trying to get the highway department, the school department, because school, we don't have any place that can actually work on buses, nothing that size, so we're trying to look, and in solid ways, Mark Corbett said he'd like to be involved, because his vehicles, he has to send them out for maintenance, so we're looking at trying to do a big maintenance facility, and I talked to Scotty today, and he's like, well, we really like our space, it's a big space, we've got a lot over there, so, just in conversation with him, I was like, well, your guys are on the road pretty much all day, so that thing's empty, right? And he goes, well, yeah, so how many bays are open? He said, one or two. Well, can we start doing bus maintenance there, and Mark Corbett's maintenance there, and he's agreeable to it, so instead of us having to build a new building and buy a property, we might be able to expand a little bit where he's at and have both groups start working there, so, just saying kudos to somebody really looking out for everybody else in the county and saying, we have a space we can use, let's work together, and that was fantastic. So, I mean, Pat and Scott on the back again for really looking outside and not just taking care of themselves and taking care of the county, because if we're able to run our own buses, which we can't do our maintenance because we don't have a space, if we're able to do the maintenance there, the school system spends $5 million dollars a year on bus contracts, that's, and a lot of that's caused maintenance, and there's no place to do the maintenance, so just saying thank you, and looking at everybody working together, so we can talk about regionalism all we want to, but this is actually in effect, this is, our groups working together for the better of Southern County, so, thank you, thanks to Scotty, and thanks to everybody looking together.
Thank you, and I want to take this opportunity to recognize the school board chairman Randall Jones and our arriving director of schools, Chuck Carter, we had a great reception, and that reception, people get to know each other, and we work with each other, and so thank you all for standing for the meeting, and a little bit on first point, I'd like to say, we just got great constitutional officers and department heads here in Southern County, and there's a thousand things going on every day, and when they go on, there are a thousand rumors about those thousand things that go on every day, so I would encourage you to call your colleagues when you hear a rumor, if it emanates from someplace, call that place, that's the best way to get the right information. I move out every night, sometimes I go sleep in between before bed, but I'll be happy to answer my phone about any time, but, and I know these other constitutional officers will be happy to do that during the night, but it's, the social media, and so many things happening now, and they're happening fast, and there's so much missing information, and we don't always have the right information, but we'll share with you what we have, and I know I speak for all the constitutional officers and department heads, and particularly Mr. Bailey, so, thank you for the work you do. Motion to adjourn? Matt, you've got yours on too, I'm sorry, I got, she said it hurts you quick, I'm going to get it to the first man. This might be true.
Just a last reminder before the ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting tomorrow on the kiosk, it was installed yesterday, I was up there during the installation, and I had a lot of curious people stopping and asking questions, and I'd explain to them what it was and what they could do with it, and they were so excited, so excited, so I got a lot of good support, a lot of good comments yesterday, people are excited about it, so if you're in that area, Food City on Ballinger Parkway at 11 o'clock. No, no food.
No, I have food. Matt, you're recognized.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on a couple of comments, but I want to thank sheriff's department and highway department for solving a safety issue in city Bristol for installing guard rail on short notice, and I appreciate the work together on that. Also, I want to recognize Councilman Luttrell, thanks for being here, and I thank you for all the work that you do, sir. And a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Matt. One other thing, I mentioned a lot of things going on, day before you, Zane and I were in Kingsport City Hall. Yesterday, I was with Bristol, folks talking about their city hall and our courthouse up there, so, again, you see people meeting, you wonder what's going on, give us a call, we'll tell you everything we know. We're adjourned.